This is the Bartholomew Town Podcast.
Welcome into this special edition of the Bartholomew Town Podcast. I'm your host, Bill Bartholomew. Today, a debate forum between two candidates for the vacant Ward One Providence City Council seat and that special election coming up here in Providence on Tuesday, March 3rd. Now, of course, that's Super Tuesday, so we'll have that exciting blend of national and local returns coming in. I'll try to bring you inside as much as I can anyway on Tuesday from my perspective. I'll be out and about in the capital city, particularly in Ward One for that special election. Okay, today's debate, more of a forum conversation, no chairs overturned or anything like that. The participants, again, two of the three candidates. The invitation extended to all three candidates. The two that participated, Nick Chikatelli and Anthony Santuri. We had a wonderful conversation. John Gonzalez, now he's the third candidate. The invitation again extended and in keeping with journalistic tradition, I had a chair and microphone set up for him even though he was not in attendance at the debate. Okay, so this podcast dropping on a Friday, the election's on a Tuesday. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to listen to this and then go and do some research, maybe even go out and meet these fine gentlemen. They'll be out and about, I'm sure, all three of them, I'm sure. And hopefully this will give you at least an opportunity to have some insight into the basic directions, approaches, experience, you know, just the fundamental relevant facts to build some kind of relationship with the person that you might want to vote for. And we'll get to all of that, but I want to tell you about Elmwood Songwriters Club presented by the Bartholomew Town Podcast. Now, that's our recurring event right here at the Loft in Providence that features six to 10 different performing artists from around Rhode Island, or in some cases, national artists. Each artist performs two songs and I draw the order randomly out of this cauldron. Actually, now, the way it works is audience members, audience participation, look out, two-way street here, audience members draw each performer one at a time. It moves fast and the best part of it may very well be that after the performances, we all hang out and have a great conversation. It's a community discussion. We've got politicos, we've got songwriters, we've got artists, we've got people from all over the state in one place, and that place is the Loft. Now, the next event is March 27th, right here again at the Loft in Providence, plenty of parking. If you want more information about Elmwood Songwriters Club, you can email me, bill@ri podcast.com. All right, gentlemen, welcome to, we're like a week out now from the Ward One special election here in Providence, three candidates, and we've got two of them here today. So let's kick this off first with a little intro. Whoever wants to go first?
Go ahead, Nick.
Well, thanks, Bill, for having me.
Yeah, pleasure.
And Anthony, thanks for joining. We're missing one of the three of us. Anyway, my name is Nick Chikatelli. I live on Wickens Street. I've been there in my ninth year there. I am the president of the Fox Point Neighborhood Association. This is my second year as president. I've been on the board for five years. I do some work with the American Red Cross as well. I'm on the Board of Directors there as well, and I get involved in some of the disaster prep training and stuff like that. I am in the real estate business a couple of different ways. I have a real estate license and I have a little apartment and property management business. And this has been a really fun opportunity. It's great to get to meet my neighbors. There's a lot of interesting people out there and people that just didn't know were there. I mean, it's old fashioned that way, but I'm really glad I got to do it. It's funny, Anthony and I, sitting next to me, were talking for at least a year about what would happen after Seth Urdin was gonna be term limited. And both had basically discussed our own potential intentions to take over after his term limit. And I gotta say, I mean, I'm a fan of term limits, but they didn't quite think about what might happen if, if, let's see, the nucleus of people that instituted term limits would have been reelected the maximum number of times. And that basically is what happened. So Seth abruptly resigned, that's one, but there's going to be six more leaving the council in another two years. So definitely want to make sure that the next person that replaces Seth Urdin has some experience in neighborhood advocacy, can contribute some knowledgeable inputs towards budget conversations, and who's been around, who's been around the block. So happy to throw my hat in the ring. And, yeah, thanks for having me.
Anthony?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Nick. I have to tell you, Nick is the best at thanking people and I am learning from him.
It's really just buying time. It's a trick.
Exactly. I always refer to it. He does it two or three times and then I finally catch on. Very polite. So Anthony Santuri, I live in Ward One also. I'm a business owner in downtown. I'm actually a nightclub owner and I own the Free Play Bar Arcade, which is not a plug for that. So I'm in the customer service business. I used to be a partner in a restaurant downtown too. So I have a lot of business experience. I believe in small business. I believe it's a funding stream that we are not paying enough attention to and a job creator that we're not paying enough attention to. That being said, like Nick also, we've worked together on many things because I'm on the board of the JDA and I was a founding member of the Downtown Neighborhood Association and I was a co-founder of the Neighborhood Coalition with John. I know he's not here, but we founded that together. It was something I had been discussing for years.
You told me about that at least two years ago.
Yes, you and I discussed it and it was kind of something we thought would be a great thing for these, what we called overlapping city issues that were not so siloed. And we kind of just put it together and John asked to be part of that, so we went with it. That being said, this is actually, yes, very important, this race with the way it's going to kind of evolve in the future. So right now, we have the three of us running and that person will be in for the remainder of Seth Urdin's term. Then there are some people who have been in there far longer than the term limits that they've instituted now. They're going to be leaving. Very important that we set the stage for what's coming in the future and we understand that the person who goes in, you know, has the experience and I think life experience matters. And yes, living in this ward. So I've lived in Providence for close to 30 years with two homes, but I have not lived in the ward for 30 years, but I've worked in the ward for 15 years. So I think between the combination of it, you don't necessarily have to just live in the ward to understand the ward. Living in Providence, working in the ward, living in the ward, being involved and engaged are what matters. Couple of things that I feel are important for your city council person as someone who has the ability, like Nick and I do, being business owners, we have flexible schedules. We, this is a full-time job. You have to have full-time availability, whether you need to use it or not, depends, but you have to have it. Nick and I, at 8:30 this morning, we're up at a meeting and here at 5:00. Didn't matter. You say when we need to be there, we have to find a way to be there. Very crucial. The other part is, the only things I really promise is I promise I will listen to everyone. I've always been on that other side of the aisle, important to get it from there. And I'll read everything before I sign it, which sounds silly, but we're not sure everyone does. And building partnerships is my real strength, building partnerships with people who generally don't have them or don't want them. So that's something I think is very important to get anything done. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, a pleasure again. So let's get right to sort of a lightning round of five different areas here. I've got my coin, for those of you listening, most of everyone listening, it's a podcast here. We'll have Anthony Rhode Island and then this American Shield will be Nick and whoever lands can choose if they want to answer first or second. Here it goes. What a flip. Nick, would you like to receive the first topic or defer it?
So you're not listing the topics first?
Well, I can list them out for you if you'd like.
Well, I think that'd be more fun.
Let's do it. Let's have some fun here.
That's strategy.
Why not? You know, let's get right into it here. The first thing, definitely restoring the downtown area as a vibrant center for the city. There's been a lot of emphasis on the 195 land. There's a lot of emphasis about the opportunity zones. We see a lot of developments surrounding Brown and Rizzi. What about the downtown Turks Head, quote-unquote, former epicenter of the city that may be slipping away? So that's topic number one. Topic number two, housing in the city. The affordable housing crisis, is that something that should be addressed from the council level? Is that something that should be addressed at the state or federal level? What kind of partnerships can we form? Obviously, number three, schools. Number four, the new Providence that we heard the mayor describe in his State of the City address. Most importantly, how does that tie in? We're here in Elmwood right now. Okay, do they, do my neighbors, do we all feel connected to Gotham Greens, for example? And lastly, taxation, tax policy, just real baseline stuff, you know, the old, if you raise the taxes, do they run away or can you improve the infrastructure question? So let's get right into it. Would you like to answer first or defer on downtown, on the downtown area?
Why don't you go ahead, Anthony?
Okay, so I actually live in the downtown area. That's where I live in the ward. I look at our downtown as the epicenter too. So I always talk about us being a capital city and we throw out terms like world-class city and destination city. They're just words. So until you create a destination and you create destinations within the city and you execute them at a world-class level, you're not going to be having the influx of people that we need. So what we do need is we need to grow density and I know Nick and I are in a lot of agreement on this. We have to grow density that's fair and balanced and the type of density that creates an ability for everyone to enter into here. Once we build the density, we have to also tie that into the fact that we have to develop small businesses in a way that they are going to prosper. And if they prosper, they create more jobs. And if they create more jobs, more people can work here and play here and live here and come here. So you want to create an excitement and I think we have a lot to offer in downtown for an excitement, you know? We have water and we have a walkable city and we have fantastic restaurants and we have a nightlife community and we have daytime thriving community for us too. And we're crafting this and I'll stay away from the whole development of the other area because that's a separate question, which will add to this. So I think we have to focus on that. We do need to create in the downtown area a way for it to be easy to enter, easy to navigate, and also jobs that are going to pay you in a manner that you're going to be able to enjoy, not just live in this city, be able to afford to live and keep the lights on, but go out and enjoy and take part in the everyday world.
How do you incentivize someone that might say, hey, look, I want to move to Providence, but you know, look, the Wexford Building is shiny and new and I've got the pedestrian bridge and Plant City and Boston Globe and Orsted and, you know, Rebecca Weber's in there doing the Run Club and all this business. How, how do you convince them to say, hey, maybe take a look at some of these downtown properties and we'll stay here and then we'll go to you for a full answer on this?
Sure. So if they were talking about investing in a property, actually, either purchasing it or bringing in their dollars to invest in it to create something. So I'll talk about if we want to create a restaurant. One of the issues that I have is I want to make sure that they know the support they need is there for them. So density is a support. So they have to know that we have a plan for density and a plan to retain this density and the type of demographics that they want, but also not everyone drives cars, but a lot of people from outside of our city do. So if we want somebody, for instance, to come into downtown and we want them to put a million five into rehabbing a building and maybe opening a cool restaurant, like Plant City, by the way, and they are challenged with the fact that they don't think anyone can get there except if they already live there, their business plan is going to be challenged. And we have to make sure that we hear them so that they have the opportunity to have everyone possible come into the city and see what they have to offer and enjoy what it is and then go out and tell others.
Nick, on the downtown area?
Well, I would start this answer by thinking about if we're going to get Providence to a place of fiscal stability, what might be one course of action to get there? And I think that it's by growing the population. We've got about 180,000 people. I would like to see us get north of two, if we have more residents. That's more economic participants, it's more taxpayers, that's more, that's more users of local businesses. I think downtown is in a unique position where you can get the density in the building. You have, you can get up to, you can't have a 20-story building in Fox Point. So there is some scale there and opportunity. I think you definitely have to incentivize that and ways to do that include like tax stabilization agreements. It starts with just the understanding that money goes where it's treated best and that you can't force a developer to do anything at all. So it's not like we have an abundance of cranes on the skyline where we can start saying no to projects. Fane was an outlier. I'm firmly against that. I know Anthony is too, but that's an outlier. So I think we do have to use public incentives to get developers to develop. And if we do that, we can get that, that bulk, that density. I do want to de-politicize the process though. I don't think we should have a political council reviewing every single project on a case-by-case basis and who knows who and who's, you know, that, even if that's cleaner than it, than I make it sound, the perception from elsewhere exists. If you're outside of Rhode Island, or even if you're in it, if you're in it, I think you have a self-esteem problem.
Big time. Big chip on your shoulder.
Outside Rhode Island, there's, there's that perception that to do business in Rhode Island, you need to know a guy or know somebody or else you get, you know, you're up a river, so, up a creek, I guess. So, yeah, downtown is cool. We have, if you ask me what my favorite part of the city is, I would say that we have big city amenities with little city cost of living. So we've got, we're a foodie city. We're lucky that we have a lot of heritage populations that value that sort of thing. We also have Johnson and Wales, which is great. So mix those two together. If you're, if you're serving bad food, you can't, you can't, you're not going to make it. So the market here for that is awesome.
That's really well said. It is.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, I think the idea of population, I mean, thinking back to the population of Providence and during World War II, you know what I mean, vastly greater than now. I mean, there was a full Chinatown at the turn of the century in Providence. So there's certainly, the infrastructure was there at one point.
Yeah, I want to be clear though, a lot of the, so a lot of, when it was a bigger population, you had a lot of crowded workforce housing. People that, once upon a time, going back before World War II, to the age of the Robert Baron, you had people that lived and died within a mile of their birth.
Crammed in. Tenement housing.
Correct. Yeah, near the mills where they worked. Now, that's not what I'm advocating for, to be clear.
Oh, for sure. I know. I think that, yeah, we should all be clear. I also see where it, that this isn't about boxing people into, you know, the conventional three-story houses.
And that's why I think we both try to make sure it's, it's an entire quality of life. The density has to not just be that we're dense here, but you have the ability to enjoy and live a quality life in a dense and well-populated city that helps grow the economy.
Let's pivot to housing since we're there. That's next area. Who's responsible? You know, I think that's the question I'll ask and go first on this one, Nick, if you would. The, the baseline layman's answer, who is responsible for setting policies that will ultimately determine the plight or fate of those who are having a hard time finding affordable housing with a lowercase "s" by the way, here in Providence?
Workforce housing, right. Well, so that should be done by the local, most local government possible because they're most in tune with the need. The problem is, it's also when you do it that way, they have the least amount of resources to do it. So we need local policy, local spearheading. I think that's something we can do on the council that gets support from state and federal programs. I think types of support I like to see coming from the state with affordable housing can be to prop up programs like Stop Wasting Abandoned Properties, which is a partner of the Providence Redevelopment Agency. I don't know if you're familiar with this. This is part of my affordable plan. I think we all talk about housing in a different way, but one thing I would like to do if I make it to council is to scale up this program and this, and this facility such that what it does is it goes around, it's identifying almost 300 abandoned or derelict properties, blighted properties around the city. And then it sets up with a, with a public or private or both partnership to develop it, turn it into multi-mixed housing with an emphasis on affordable, both the subsidized type and just the workforce housing. So on Pine Street, they just opened two, completed the project for two buildings with 76 affordable units in it, retail on the first floor. Now, that's two buildings. We've got 300 around the city. If we can scale that up, that'd be a huge chunk.
Anthony?
So I think it has to be made a priority with more than just talking about it as a priority, which means a city council person, as Nick was saying, stands up and this is what they're shouting. And they keep shouting this and they make it a priority. It's an outcry. It's something that we don't let go of once you're in office afterwards. Also, I just can't seem to get anybody to really define for me what affordable housing is. We all have what we think affordable housing is. We all come from a different financial perspective of this. So I try to figure it out on a level with the type of employees I work with. So I look at this and I say, two people together in an apartment, they need a two-bedroom, married, together, partners, or whatever it is, friends. They both make the magical $15 an hour minimum wage, which is great. They work full-time, okay, and they make $1,200 a week. They keep nine after taxes. A third of it, we'll say, goes towards their rent. Find me the $1,200 two-bedroom apartment.
Right.
Okay, so now I say, how do we add to that? So let's say we call it 1,200. I think if we can help small business do well, we can create what I call opportunities for you to then, you say whose responsibility it is, it's everyone's responsibility. So if you can go out and you and I have time in the week and I say, okay, Friday night, I'm going to go work at this place and Sunday afternoons, you're going to work there. We make a couple a hundred extra a week, 800 more a month. Now, maybe we get the apartment, but now we can actually live in this city and enjoy this city. By the way, they're going to have to put their money where their mouth is, everybody. We're going to have to know that developers, I don't know if you've talked to some of them too, and people who want to do this, they're not all bad people, but they have a bottom line and they can't make it work. So we have to find a way to incentivize it in a way, but they have to follow this afterwards and keep their word, that they're going to have a plan to build a certain amount, to get to the amount we need, begin the process. That's what we have to do. Put the money behind it, state, city, local, and shout about it. Make it a priority all the time.
So you would use the city council as a bully pulpit to advocate for housing as a priority? Nick?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, sure, it's a local, it should be administered locally, but it, we need funding from, from the state house. I do want to say, just building off what Anthony said here, it's supposed to be debate, but we'll build off the conversation.
You can debate me at some point.
Yeah, so money goes where it's treated best, right? We have the building costs of Boston, but we get basically the rents of Maine. So that means that most of the developers are going to go for the high end because that's the only way, like Anthony just said, they're going to make it work. So if we want, we want mixed development, we do have to incentivize it. So I am in favor of TSAs and I have this wild and crazy idea that if we, if we granted TSA, the developer should be asked to make a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. I think that just makes perfect sense. I don't know what the numbers should be or ought to be, is yet, but you know, we have different scales of TSAs, but that should be part of the product.
Yeah, if I can jump in with that too, because these are what I want to say are, are ideas that we have to discuss. They're out of the box ideas we have to discuss and we have to come up with something new. The way it's been going isn't working or we wouldn't be talking about this over and over and over again. So whether that actually happens, we have to talk about it. We have to understand that these are other ways that we have to add to this process. I don't expect to go in here as a newly elected city council person, if I have that privilege, and change everything overnight, but I do want to start looking at it in a different way. I want to approach in a different way and we have to listen to the people that it affects most. So we really have to talk to everyone out there who says to me, I gotta say to them, what can you afford? You and the person you're with, tell me. Now, it may not be practical or feasible, but tell me what it is and then find a way to achieve that. And everyone gives a little. Maybe they got to come up a little, maybe we got to add a little more. Find something and start somewhere real.
This is the Bartholomew Town Podcast.
Let's pivot to schools. You know, doesn't get much more front and center than that. Let's start with elected school board accountability, I guess, after the school, pardon me, after the state takeover, you know, looking to then, I guess, is really a reasonable question at this point. How do you see the infrastructure of management for the Providence schools? And what would you use your council seat to, how would you use your council seat to position your voice in that process?
So first, I'll say that I do welcome the state intervention. I welcome any intervention at this point for what we all know is the broken system. It's not working, the can kicked down the street and it's a disgrace. That being said, okay, the blame game, where does it go? Who wants the blame? I don't know. We got to put the blame out there. So now it's there. Now, what can we do? Again, the priority of this, everyone talks a good talk about schools, but are we making it the priority that we need to make it? So that's where we have to start. I think you need a united council on this and you need a united, united administration, sorry. And then we together, stand together for this and we make sure everyone knows this clearly is what we want. Now, we know we do, about half of our budget goes to education already in the city. We know that we have the unfunded pension liability. There's limited resources here. We have a monumental infrastructure problem here. I mean, you talk hundreds of millions of dollars, who can wrap their heads around what hundreds of millions of dollars are? So I don't think I have the answer per se. I don't pretend to have the answer, but I do feel, even though I'm a person who doesn't have children, that it's every person's concern. If you love this city and you want to leave this city better than you found it, then education is the place to start. So if someone said to me, hey, Anthony, I promise you that we can't fix the roads and we can't fix the sidewalks, but we'll put all that money towards the schools and they'll be fixed. I might give it a thought about driving around the pothole for a while and dealing with it if I believed you would actually achieve this. So maybe we have to think of where these limited resources go and how much we have to target them and for how long.
Well, I think you got a lot of good ideas there, Anthony. It's, I believe that the school system should have been taken over by the state 15 or 20 years ago. I have a grandfather that was an administrator in Providence Public Schools. He was principal of Mount Pleasant High School and Central High School. And we lost him last year, but he had a good long run, had his marbles to the end and he read the, he read the Johns Hopkins Report that was done last year and I got the chance to talk to him about it. And he said something that was alarming. I mean, this was out there already in the, in the ether, but, but he had a front row seat. He said that 93 or 94, 93, I think, they did a very similar study.
Yeah, 93.
93. And they found, he said, some of the names have changed, the groups have shifted from one to another, but every single structural problem that was identified in 93 is either the same or worse 25 years later. So if you think about that, that's an entire generation that we failed.
Right.
And, you know, it's a shame. I mean, I want to answer your question about the elected board in a second here, but I just think that these things are related. The housing problem, the jobs problem, the development problem is all related. If you are a young family and you're looking to get, let's just say that you can get a company that has the 10 or, or pick a number, XYZ, all the, all the knowledge jobs in the world are coming to Providence. If you're a young family looking to get one of those jobs and you're qualified for it, you're going to be seriously, you're not making quite the money that you can afford private school. You're going to be, you have a, almost the decision's made for you that you really can't come to Providence if you're going to be worried about your kid's education outcomes. So it's just a shame. There's, there's just so much to it. It really should have been taken over ages ago. Now, whether, as whether it should be elected, I believe it should not be elected. I believe that the political reelection needs of the person in charge is what got us down this road. It's what got us 4% and 6% automatic COLAs in the retiree contract. It's what got us, you know, the abusive sick days regime, the difficulty in, in being an administrator. I think that has to do with, as I like to say a lot, Anthony probably heard me say this, as a taxpayer, we're both taxpayers. I like to think that my taxes are going towards Buddy Sianci's reelection campaigns, you know, meaning that powerful constituencies that, that are stakeholders in the school system, their real, their political needs, their needs were then able to sway a political election. So I don't think adding more elected officials is going to solve this problem. From a political science background, I've got a master's degree in political science and a second one in public administration. I'll just plug that real quick. I think political scientists would, would agree that, that the elected officials, number one need, first need is to get reelected. Now, that's not, that's, that's a general rule. You know, you do have some, some good apples out there, something like that, but it's, it's a widely regarded general rule. So I don't believe that, that adding the political reelection needs of an elected board are going to, going to solve this. What I'd like to see instead, I hear you, some people say with criticism that the mayor's appointees on an appointed board are really just the mayor's political needs. I'm not saying that's the solution either, but an independent board where you actually have managers and administrators able to do, institute best practices. I think that's, that's the way forward, an independent board.
Independent board appointed by the state, like the Department of Education?
I think, well, so this is what usually happens. I mean, if it's, if it's a local board, you have mayor's appointees, you've got different stakeholders each getting an appointee, that sort of thing. I'm not sure that's the way forward, but right now, education is a war, this is, you know, constitutional education is a ward of the state. So I think that this is why the state was able to take it over and I think this should be, you should remove local politics from the board and just as much as you can.
Quickly, just clarifying, yes, on elected.
I just want Nick to know I do listen to what he says. He has good things to say. I will have to plug that I have a political science degree too, not a master's, but I also do, only because he did. So now we're even again. I like that, kind of. Lastly, for me, I'm looking more probably at what I would think would be a hybrid. I think an appointed person with elected board members also. I think that could change the process. So you have kind of what we're talking about, not everyone serving at the pleasure of someone, but also having to be elected, listening to the people that they represent. And that might be a new approach to this. That might be helpful for us to ensure that everyone's thoughts and voices are coming forward without any concern that anyone is controlled by someone in any way.
All right. So when this plane, so to speak, the, the state intervention lands once again in Providence's lap, you each have different pathways for it, but there has to be systemic changes to the process that existed in terms of bureaucratic infrastructure.
I believe we're looking at least 10 years out. I mean, this is not going to be something we're going to find out in a year or two or next year. And I actually cautioned that, like, don't, we need to give this time to work. This is a massive And I I actually cautioned that, like, don't, we need to give this time to work. This is a massive ship that we need to turn around. So it's not, you can't turn on a dime, so to speak. Uh, we can go into.
All right, kind of lightning round here, starting with Nick, again, the the new Providence idea, all right? And I guess let's get into specifics of it since it's gonna come up, bike lanes. The 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 notion of of the scooters and and the the idea of bringing the entire city into this innovation, you know, movement, which full disclosure, I'm over at the Wexford Building and, you know, I love the thought of that. I lived in Brooklyn for 10 years. It's all great, but then you wonder as an Elmwood resident, you know, certainly not Ward One, but certainly you wonder if the whole city can be connected from Ward One perspective. In a lot of ways, you're ground zero, but at the same time, you're kind of now in the shadow of a lot of this activity. Where does that go?
For starters, you can walk the city, so you should be able to bike the city. Uh, we are a small enough city. I don't fully understand why we're so bike-friendly as it is. Um, I would say, I went to school in DC. I biked everywhere. It's a bigger city to plan city, but there's a lot more people. And a lot, a lot of the difference is the culture. So the drivers were, uh, more more, uh, used to having bikes on the road and bikes were more amenable, bikers more amenable to participating in the biker economy. I think that that's, uh, I shouldn't say biker economy, the bike, yeah, and bicyclists and biking. So how do you do? You can talk about it, you know, until you're long in the in the face, but the the reality is that, um, you have to change the culture. And so things like the jump system, I supported it at Foxman Airport Association. Even the Steel Corral, there's people that complained about it. And there's people that have some interesting feedback and criticism about the 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 physical structure of bike lanes as well. I think that we should be able to connect the city with bikes. I think there should be some more infrastructure. I think there's some good feedback that, you know, this new stuff is going to get hit. It's gonna break. It's gonna, you know, degrade. We have to plan for how we're gonna maintain that stuff. Uh, and it's, there are some choke points, like in the Julie District, that it, you know, I'm not sure where else you're gonna put them, what the solution is. There'll be some growing pains, in other words, but I think that we should be moving towards a place where where we can be a bike-friendly city.
So, uh, quickly too, yes, um, I attended the Broadway, um, uh, Great Streets to find the connection. Now, tonight, there's also, uh, one for downtown at 444 Westminster at 6 o'clock. And it's going to tell you about the downtown setup of Great Streets and the bike lanes. Uh, I went to the Our Streets presentation at the Wexford Building. Beautiful presentation on why this matters. That being said, what I really think needs to be done is we need to get the information out the way that they're getting the information out. I am an older white guy who drives a car. I'm the carbon footprint guy and I'm starting to understand why this is gonna add to everyone's life, not just to my life. So you have the greater good and the particular good, okay? We have to go for the greater good, but for me to understand the greater good and get away from my particular good, I have to really see and immerse myself. So I love the fact that we're talking about this all the time. Fortunately, in my business, uh, I get to meet a lot of young people, so I understand completely how they transport themselves. It's not in cars. We need all of it. Do have to keep an eye, though, that if we want to draw people into the city from outside of the city, from outside our walkable or bikeable city, we have to make sure that we keep an eye to the fact that they are able to drive in. And we have to keep an eye to the accessibility community. We're not doing very well with making sure that our community, who has accessibility challenges, is allowed to come into our city and enjoy our city. So all of this, I had a recent meeting with planning and I talked about some of the ideas of making sure we incorporate van-accessible parking and other parking when we're doing this. Something for everyone and we can all coexist here together and we can all prosper together.
Yeah, it's fascinating. When I was recently on WPRA, that was something that I was getting a lot of calls about in particular afternoon was, hey, look, you know, I'm not against bike lanes per se, but I'm wheelchair confined, you know, or I'm disabled and.
Someone needs to speak up for them too, and not just the people who have accessibility challenges themselves. And I know that a city council person can do that also for the people in their city, all the people.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, by the way. That's one of the things I've learned in this campaign, that there is a need out there. It's not very well advertised, for lack of a better word, but there is a definite need. And, uh, and people with disabilities and with accessibility accessibility challenges are part of our fabric. So, I mean, we we need to talk about it more. Sure.
All right, last question. This could probably be a 30-second answer. Taxation broadly, where do you sit philosophically?
30-second answer on taxation.
Otherwise, we could do a 30, 30.
I don't like taxes.
There's this brand of, you know, Rhode Island politics that I remember, you know, that was fiscally conservative and socially progressive. It seems like it vanished. My first instinctual, uh, you know, again, breathing, this is obviously editorializing. My my first instinct is that you each fall somewhere in that category where there's at least some element of restraint to whatever ambitions you're all to pursuing. Is that a fair statement, I guess, if you will?
I think I can speak for the both of us, saying whatever's on the national, uh, stage right now is not something that we need to bring to the the city council race.
Bingo.
For sure on that, yeah. So taxes, I mean, we cannot burden and break the backs of everyone in this city who owns property by constantly taxing them. That's why I tend to talk about, as, you know, you'll hear, is creating other revenue streams and maybe working first with our small businesses that already exist. I like the big shiny object. I like the new big place that's coming down, but I don't want to hang my hat on the fact that if that doesn't succeed, we are not going to do well. So we already have people here who are working every day, who have small businesses. We're not really doing much. I'd love to see a TSA for the small business owners. I really would. Something that says to them, so you're a property owner and you have two six families and you need to fix them, okay? And imagine if you say, okay, I'm gonna fix them, but I have to raise the rents. Of course, gotta raise the rents. How about we help you fix those, but you keep the rent stabilized for X amount of time? I try to bring everything back to how would you do it in your own home, with your own life, with your own business, with your own family, and your own little piece of the American dream. If you can do it for yourself, then we can do it for others.
That's a good point, yeah. I mean, tax reform is a tricky issue. It's it's much longer, uh, an issue, much longer history than just what happened last year. I do not like and I cannot support, um, pitting one neighborhood against another. Or, uh, so that's the geographic element. Um, it's a de facto element, even though, you know, it was a benchmark of the of the of the Homestead exemption. But I don't like the false logic either that somehow, um, just because there are wealthy people that can and will, uh, or or can and want to pay more or willing to pay more on the east side, that magically everyone that lives in a neighborhood can do that as well. I mean, we have retirees in Ward One, we've got, uh, people on a fixed income, we've got public servants. I met someone the other day, um, let's see, she she retired in the early 90s, bought her house in the late 70s for like $52,000 or something like that. And her tax bill is now $28,000. She hasn't gotten a cost of living adjustment raised in in, I don't know, I forget the number, five or 10 years. Retired on a fixed income and has to come up with that kind of money. So, I mean, we shouldn't be forcing people out and we shouldn't be targeting a zip code. That's that doesn't make sense to me. So if you want to talk about progressive taxes, let's talk about it. But to pretend that that, uh, that attempt last year was progressive is, you know, fits a very narrow definition and in my opinion, not a practical one.
Correct.
All right, we've got a mic on a folding chair here for Mr. John Consalves. Not able to be here with us this evening, um, the third candidate in this race. Invitation was presented and, uh, we'll see if he might respond to a few of these questions and chime in as well. We'll see via via email.
Well, yeah, we're here. We're here and, uh, this was, this was fantastic and I really appreciate this because, you know, your listeners in the city really gets to hear, you know, from both of us. And I think it's, you know, just sitting here, this is like just sitting in a living room and having a conversation. And, uh, it's great. That's really what I think is missing sometimes. I am not a politician. It's my first time running. I think it is for you also.
Correct.
So I I think you're getting something here that's an approach of some regular people who are just like, hey, I'd like to do better. I'd like to add a public service component to my life. I'm committed. I have the time to do it. I have the experience to do it. Both of us do. And, um, we're really doing this, I believe I can speak for Nick on this, not to better our lives, but to maybe hopefully better yours. And that's where we're gonna find it out from, from all of you out there, and maybe we can implement that.
I know Anthony feels his way as well, but I, you know, I want, uh, my time here on earth to be a contribution. I don't want to just be a consumer where I make some money, buy some stuff and die. So, uh, from 10,000 feet, that's that's kind of why I'm doing this. I mean, I don't, I don't. I'm in the many generation of people who graduated college just in time for the Great Recession.
Yeah.
So, I, you know.
Same here.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sitting in a loft doing a podcast, you know?
Well, yeah, I'm out of fingers and toes to me to count people who had to leave to find opportunity. So.
Bingo.
There's one last thing I'd like to say that in the LGBTQIA+ community, which Nick and I are both a part of. There's something I learned from my friends there when I was on the board from others. It's called use your privilege. Okay, so everyone has a level of privilege. And this is something that you will see. If you look at it, you will see that we don't necessarily have to legislate that you give more money to people. There are people out there who use their privileges, if it's money, if it's time, if it's just kindness. And that's what I'd really like everyone to know. We all have a privilege and if we all used it for each other, I think we'd see a lot of changes that we don't necessarily have to legislate or pit people against, as you were saying, because sometimes it's a desperate act to just try to do something that needs to be done.
Yeah, sometimes if you look at the actual details, you go, oh, the partnership for Rhode Island just put a quarter million dollars into a certain project or they're funding bookshelves in this elementary school, yet that's not front page or anywhere broadcast. A lot of the complaints are without merit because of, you know, again, this isn't to defend, you know, turn, I'm not turning to Mitt Romney or something like that. But I'm saying, you know, there is a truth to the fact that there are people who do use their privilege. Well, it's more of just as turning a mirror on those who aren't and saying, you know, kind of wake up and.
That's it. Come on over.
Actually, on that very note, I'm not sure if you're trying to kick us out or what.
No, I'm, you know, go for it, yeah.
It's just the thing that just pops in my mind. You've got, um, you've got a very wealthy university, three blocks away from a crumbling school. So it's not just people. We gotta look to institutions.
Correct. Oh, yeah. Should they be paying full taxes, each of those, that institution in RISD?
That's that, no, that's difficult. I mean, you've got, uh, the the contribution they make is is very complex. It's hard to quantify.
We were just there this morning. We discussed this with them. We actually, Nick and I discussed all of what you're saying. I know we don't have time, but.
Yeah, we asked the hard questions, worried that they might escort us off the premises.
Yes, we we had our muffin and our coffee ready to run out just in case. But we did, I will let you know, that's a good question and it's a big question, as Nick said, but we were there today and we asked it and and, you know, everyone in the room was not us, so. And they were, listen, this is a discussion. This is a, an agreement that has to be revisited and talked.
It's an essential part. We're all talking about it in this campaign. The mayor's talking about it now at WPRI, just just released yesterday or today. And it was a little bit, um, disconcerting to find out that 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 was not a priority for for our third running mate.
Yes, unfortunately, because it was very important, this one, and it did speak exactly to this. And if I can just say to you, when you're in the room with a group of people like that who are trying to do something right, you can get a a sense of how they feel. They want to do more for their community. They are trying to come up with every way possible. And again, this is a whole discussion Nick and I could have about just that one meeting and leaving there and feeling better that we've already created a partnership. And as potential, uh, uh, city council representatives, if one of us is privileged to be chosen, we're creating that partnership now with them and they know where we stand.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's exactly right. And that's, you made this point earlier. I agree with it. I mean, how are we gonna get stuff done at city council? Well, it takes, it takes building partnerships, relationships with other people. And, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what the job basically is, uh, being a bridge between different ideas, different folks, and then building a, building a coalition.
Where can, uh, potential voters or other, anyone who may be interested in this race find out about you, I guess Twitter or social media website, can do that?
Yep, uh, I'm on Facebook. You can find me at www.Nick, uh, the number four, PVD.com, N-I-C-K, number four, PVD.com.
Yep, same thing with me, Facebook, Twitter, uh, although these are the first times in my life I've ever been on social media.
Really?
Yeah, I've been that guy that if you wanted something to say to me, you literally had to walk up to my face or call me. And you don't get too many calls and you don't get too many people to say it to you. But, you know, this is part of the new world. And again, I'll give my phone number out, 401-316-4288. I got a call today from a constituent who got my mailer and it said, call me. And he called me and it was a great thing. I know you have mailers out there with the same thing. And I loved it. And I was like, yes, thank you. So please do that. We need to hear from you.
All right, gentlemen, thanks so much. But last, you got someone else or? It seemed like your tip of your tongue was.
There's, there's no shortage of it. 401-400-2650. Yeah, we get asked this a lot. How can you, how can you reach us? Um, and and would we be visible candidates? I think we definitely, or office holders, we think we definitely would be. You can, uh, you can count on being, uh, me being accessible to your need. And I think Anthony can say the same thing.
Yeah, and and I know that just some of the listeners, I I think this is a great situation for Providence, you know. There's two of us here, but, you know, the three of us, we know each other and we're involved, engage people. This is a good thing. This, there's some good choices here. We just have to distinguish ourselves with maybe a skill set that we might have that someone feels is going to resonate more with them. So, uh, you know, I mean, I have the greatest respect for Nick and I know he does for me. And we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're staying friends after this and staying friends and and, you know, it it's the right thing to do. So that's who you're gonna get in leadership. That's who you're gonna get here.
Right. Well, so the last thing I'm gonna say, I promise, that we're all, we're we're applying for a job here and and the voters are the ones that are gonna be, uh, are gonna be the hiring manager. And so, uh, you know, we've got, every time you look to apply up for a job, you gotta give a resume. And then, you know, I just, uh, I would just ask the voters, like, that's it. That's all I ask the voters, is look at the resume. Look for someone who's been involved with with nonprofit organizations, uh, neighborhood advocacy, has run a business, uh, that sort of thing. The council does, uh, control roughly $800 million budget. So, uh, I I think that it's gonna take some experience to offer something, uh, contribute something to that conversation.
Thanks for spending part of your day here on the Bartholomew Town Podcast. Email me anytime, bill@ri podcast dot com. Until next.
At Health Source RI for employers, we provide access to health insurance to more than 1,100 local businesses and nonprofits. And 96% of them renew through us every year. Maybe it's our choice of 19 different health plans, our 10 years of customizing solutions, or our one local team of dedicated experts helping employers find quality health insurance. See how our numbers stack up for you. Learn more at healthsourceri.com/employers.